Yes would be the answer. Call the meeting to order. It is five o'clock and thirty seconds. We would be all present and accounted for with the exception of Pat, who is on vacation. He will be back soon.
He's working.
A working vacation. Uh-huh. So, first order of business would be the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Do we have any extras on here?
Nothing tonight.
Motion by Rob.
Thank you.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other statements? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. You know, by the way, I saw a district north of us that begins every meeting with the pledge of allegiance, which I think is kind of cool.
Oh.
Yeah, and it used to be when we were kids it was mandatory, and then it's not politically correct anymore at times, but, you know, just food for thought, that wouldn't hurt us at all, and I would like to see it.
We have our students do it.
I'd like to sing American minatone.
Now you're going over the top.
That's a solo.
Solo, we'll stand there.
Yeah.
Both are overdone.
Okay, we approve the agenda, and minutes from the past meeting, if you all had a chance to look at them, do you have any questions or concerns? If not, I'll make a motion to approve. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob, who approved the minutes from the last meeting. Anything else? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried.
Are you going to read?
Nope, no, no. Drag it on. Six forty-five. Get your producers. We have none. We'll move on to the finance report.
You all have a treasures report in your packet. I won't spend a lot of time on that. I'll spend a little bit on the revised budget later. So you can just see we're still in a good cash position. This is our cash balance at the end of January, and I just left those fund balances on there as a reference for you guys as I move forward.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda. Any other questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. See, no old business. We have some under new business. We have the consent agenda. We have nothing under personnel, and I would assume I haven't looked in here in depth with lunch report, attendance report. These are considered routine matters unless for any reason somebody wants to pull one of those items out. Otherwise...
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right. Brenda?
I'll second.
And Kurt has seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Approval of the expenditures. Attachment F. Suppose you've got time to look at these.
Just 0250, what is custom communications?
What's the number?
I'm sorry, wrong one. Looking at the...
Over. Check number?
41601.
Customs communications, just wondering what that might have been.
That's custom alarm.
Oh, okay.
Take care of our fire alarms and monitoring inspection.
I'm quite concerned about 41375, that maybe that's a personal issue.
Oh, is that right?
Yeah.
I think that's good.
It went in the hole.
I think we should probably make that a little bigger.
It's my officiating check that they rescinded it, for those of you who need to know. They rescinded it because...
What are they saying?
Overpaying?
One of the needs that...
Actually, they piggybacked two games on there, and one of them got postponed, and they didn't feel like paying me for that game, so...
At least it shows you were watching that question.
Yeah, I was just pulling my hand out.
Yeah, what is that one?
Okay, other...
Rob has one.
Check number, what did that one go?
Five, five.
553. 41553, Marshall, fifty-six thousand. What project was that?
That's the switches.
Yeah, that's the bulk of the approval from earlier.
Is that part of that eighty thousand that we...
It'll be eighty-two, that's all done.
Yeah. So those are up and running.
We can discuss that later under technology if you want. It's, yeah, they're working very, very well.
Good.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve expenditures.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, seconded by Rob, to approve the expenditures as shown. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the fourteen fifteen school calendar. You know, we've hit, this is the first year we've only had one calendar to choose from. Usually they say this is one, this is the other, which includes, usually it's the student out, if you will, for a week. You know, I remember the days when that just wasn't extra to us, and now it's usually part. And I did email Tim and ask for some perspective on it, so I'd kind of like to throw it in your lap. This one includes a spring break.
Correct. We built two calendars, one with a spring break and one without a spring break. Those were presented to EA, and the EA voted on the calendar with the spring break built in. And I think, you know, if I had to guess, I didn't really look into why they voted for that one, but if I had to guess, I would say it's because of the timing of the calendar this year with Labor Day on September 2nd, and the way our quarter breaks lay out with everything and with Easter, it allows for a two-week Christmas break and a four-day spring break, right? It's sandwiched around Easter weekend.
Always that Easter weekend.
Yeah, so it allows for both of those, and it really only extends us into June by four days, so...
And the staff that I talked to really felt strongly, like instead of making it snow days at the end of the year, let's build in a spring break so that if we need them, we've got it.
I was gonna ask you a question. How many snow days have we got?
It's on our discussion at the end. It's on our agenda. But I think, you know, everything that he just said, and with the idea that these last couple years have been really hard on making up those snow days, it kind of gives us some leverage to pull from the spring break.
To back up so that we ended like we have the last few years where we're ending the week of Memorial Day so that the end of May is the end of school. You cut into the Christmas break and we go to school, and I think the twenty-second and twenty-third, and the first day of Christmas break is the twenty-fourth, is Christmas Eve. And then again, it ends, and there's not really any great timing in there for snow days late in the spring too, so I think that the reason that the EA voted to end for the spring break this year was specifically because of the timing there right now, so...
Last year we decided not to go with the spring break. What was the reason for that? It seemed like it worked better. People didn't like to separate or break away for that long, and...
It was the recommendation of the EA. That was also the recommendation of the EA, was to not have a no spring break calendar. And generally, and I'm generalizing here, but generally the elementary school wants to have a spring break, and high school and middle school does not want to have a spring break, and because there are more teachers here, when the EA votes, one that's generally brought forward is the no spring break calendar, so... But for whatever, again, for whatever reason this year, the EA voted for the spring break calendar, so... And again, my guess is because everything just lines out nicely. It just fits nicely, so...
And they haven't had a spring break for at least two years, right?
It's been a couple years for sure. Yep, and then, and when we did have a spring break last time, it was like in February. So that would be the first place we would dip into with snow. Right?
And it's late enough that we'd have them done. It's not like we're having a spring break in February, which is too early to use them.
So if we didn't, let's say we didn't go with the spring break, when would school end, and would it be...
That Memorial Day.
A week before.
The week before.
You could always build in snow days from that point, I guess.
You can, but it affects graduation and seniors.
Yeah, that's true.
The sooner you can get any days in before testing is always beneficial for the teachers, the community. Our idea is try to get as many days in before the testing.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Jerry has made a motion to approve the fourteen fifteen calendar as shown, and Brenda has seconded that. Any other questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the spring assistant coaches. Everyone have a chance to look at that? I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I'm sorry.
Jerry, Kurt.
Jerry.
Jerry and Rob.
Rob.
Me. We've a motion to second to approve the spring assistants. Any other concerns, questions? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the thirteen fourteen revised budget. Please review attachment. Aye.
And I'll just speak to that for a minute. I tried to put a kind of an analysis on page two so you would know kind of where I went with getting these numbers. When I looked at the revenues, I looked at the final levy certification, there were some levy amounts that were not recorded in the budget as revenue, so I adjusted that. I got the enrollments from Lori and recalculated the Jan. 8th, those two are eighty percent of your revenues, and so those are the most important part. As far as expenditures, I put in your seventy-five, these are things that weren't in the June budget, your seventy-five thousand dollar technology initiative, a hundred and twenty-five for legal fees, there, it was slightly higher than that, but there was some money in that budget line. We had eighty-five thousand in transportation. You had purchased the van, that GCED van, and a used bus for fifty-six hundred or something. So I built in enough to buy the van that you approved last time, and the first lease payment on the two buses that you just purchased, which on the bills was the last check on the last page. And then I also built in salary and benefits based on the current board offer, so the increase in health and 403B that was agreed on, the step increase, which has already been granted, and then about a two-and-a-half percent increase on the steps. As far as Fund Two, you know, when the budget is built for the year, it has to be approved before July 1st, so you don't really know your final audit numbers, and so I looked at your audit for final numbers last year, I looked at the year previous, and then the year-to-date expenses and all the funds, and that's a good way to kind of get a history of what you spent last year. If there weren't significant changes, then are we following the trend, that kind of thing. So I adjusted food service and community service based on that information from the audit. So I see a slight dip in food service. Really, it's tentative. It depends how the food prices come out throughout the year and that kind of thing. Not significant. They have a very nice fund balance in food service, so that's not a big deal. I predict that community service will be in the black again this year. I've spoken with Jake. We're getting a pretty big fund balance in community service. And last year, the year before, the legislature lift that twenty-five percent fund balance penalty for Fund Four, but I can't imagine that that won't come back sometime. So I think it's time to invest some of that fund balance into his programs and, you know, maybe do some things to retain your preschool teachers. I think he feels like there's a good group of teachers this year and that kind of thing. So we've talked about that moving forward. He kind of understands where he's at and that kind of thing. The big negative in debt service is because you had to make a bond payment on the 2009 series this year, and, but debt service is not something to worry about unless you have cash flow issues because your levy certification is adjusted positively and negatively so that that trends out to zero over time. It's kind of like health and safety. So that'll take care of it. So trust and agency, OPEB trust and OPEB, I really didn't, you know, I really didn't touch those. I think what Josh has in there is just fine, and so I just left it as that. So that's kind of how I went through the process and the numbers I came up with, and if you have any questions or concerns, I can certainly address those.
You know, the OPEB trust and the OPEB line, we levied several years ago.
Yes.
And so it was my understanding that we have a trust amount, and each year it lessens until ten or twelve years out. It's gone.
Yep.
So how does that, is that the trust that we're looking at?
Yeah, that's the big picture for me too, but I wasn't super comfortable with what the trust part and the actual OPEB part was, and that's kind of why I left it alone. I know it's going to work its way out to zero over ten years, but exactly how Josh had that recorded, I wasn't, I couldn't quite come to terms with that. So I know he knows what he's doing there, and so that's why I just left it at this point.
I always feel like when I look at it, I'm thinking, geez, what's happened here? But that's all part of the process, isn't it?
Yes, that's right. Yep. And it looks like I looked at your audit for the last couple of years, and it looks like it's being used and recorded appropriately, so I think it's working just fine.
So somewhat a cause for concern that we're at three seventy-one in the negative, but that's more of a snapshot in time.
Yeah, and really the hundred seventy-three in debt service, I would not be concerned, you know, about that, because that's a, debt service is going to work its way out. And you had some, there was another accounting thing for a few years that you had debt service excess, and, you know, it's just kind of reconciling all that back to zero. So that will work its way out over time in your levy certification and how much you levy for debt service. The one thirty-two six 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 out of Fund One, that I project will come out of your fund balance. I do want to do a caveat there with special ed, conservative number in special ed revenue. I adjusted it up slightly, but not a lot. There is, and of course you guys all know that special ed is always tentative, there is a projection that this year you will get some revenues from the Good York County Ed District based on them taking over some of our Mars accounting for ALC and then any targeted services we might do. I didn't include that, so that could be, that could be a bonus. And that actually, if what's out there is a hundred percent accurate, which I didn't put in because I don't feel like it maybe is, you know, you could be close to zero on that, so you may not be dipping into your fund balance. But I wanted to project it that way because that is the, this is the most conservative I have on revenues, especially in the special ed area. Otherwise, Bob, the OPEB trust and the OPEB, I wouldn't even count them really because I think that all shores up at the end of the year, and it's really an accounting thing. So the trust and agency, if you get more scholarships, you know, that could be zero too. So for me, you know, slightly under ten thousand in food service, that could be true, it could be a little more, it could be less, but you have an eighty-five thousand dollar fund balance in food service. And food service and community service, in my mind, those are fee-based programs, so you don't want to carry a ton of fund balance because you're charging fees and then you're providing service, you're providing meals or classes and that kind of thing. So, you know, you always want to have a fund balance for those rainy day events and things that you didn't plan on, but you're always trying to have a conservative fund balance because you're charging a fee for the food. So if you lose a little money because we moved to the fresh fruits and vegetables and all those kinds of things that make our food costs more, at this point with the healthy fund balance in food service, I wouldn't worry about that. So I think, you know, I suppose the conclusion to the story is that I think you're doing really quite well in all funds, and that even though the numbers changed based on, you know, revenues that weren't put in the budget and looking at your audit and last year and the previous year and this year, you know, I think you're really in pretty good shape. You've had some major expenses this year, and, you know, the fact that you're not dipping into the fund balance that much, and with extra special ed, maybe only a little, I would feel pretty confident, actually. You know, a lot of technology initiative and legal fees and those kinds of things, so...
Thank you, Ben. Any other questions for her, Beth, anyone?
This is my last week, so I'm enjoying my eight weeks.
No kidding.
Yeah, eight weeks have gone by, so I'll be happy to hand the torch back to Josh. We talked to him today, I said, are you coming back next month? He said, yeah, but I'm still not good. So anyway, I've enjoyed it, and he's enjoyed that, so...
Well, we've really enjoyed having you here. You've really done a nice job for us. Thank you.
Amazing job. It's kind of fun.
I'll make a motion to approve the revised budget. Motion by Kurt.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Flipping over, item F, consideration to approve the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a master governmental lease purchase agreement and supplemental number, et cetera. Who did that?
Well, we have been working extensively on trying to lease these buses, and it's been quite the ordeal, to say the least. We ended up going with a different leasing company. It just worked better. They're, it's Wells Fargo, so they understand Minnesota law. There was a lot of different legal sapues that we were kind of running into. This is exactly like the resolution you did last time, to go ahead so that I can move forward with the lease, but it reached just a little differently, and we need it to be this one, so if you don't mind, Brenda, we'll have you redo this resolution. Could be the top part there.
But I think we need, do we need a motion to second first?
Probably yes.
This whole paragraph?
If you'd like it.
Let's get a motion to approve first. I'll make a motion to approve the resolution. Motion by Kurt, seconded by Jerry. Okay, Brenda.
Okay, this is for a resolution of the governing body of Independent School District Number 252, authorizing the execution and delivery of a master governmental lease purchasing agreement, supplement number 425051-400. There too, with respect to the acquisition, purchase, financing, and leasing of certain equipment for the public benefit, authorizing the execution and delivery of documents required in connection therewith, and authorizing the taking of all other actions necessary to the consummation of the transactions contemplated by this resolution. Okay, Rob?
Yes.
Jerry?
Yes.
Bob?
Yes.
Brenda, yes? And Kurt?
Yes.
Okay, that passes by a five-zero vote. So we will be spending just a tad more money for this lease, but we don't have to jump through the hoops that we were holding as a...
Actually, it's the same lease amount.
Yeah.
We did find the same rate. Took some time and some effort, but we...
Yep.
We are good. I will say buying a bus is a lot easier than leasing.
So we're gonna lease again next time now? We know how to do it?
If Wells Fargo will have us.
Probably.
They'll have us.
It was smoother and thicker.
Okay, item G, consideration to approve the second reading of the revised 501 weapons policy.
Last time you did the first reading, now we're doing the second reading. We were...
I'll make a motion to approve the second reading.
Motion by Rob.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve the first reading of the Cannonball's Early Admission Policy for kindergarten.
Yeah, what's happened for 2015, 2016 is that the state is now paying for our everyday kindergarten. Some school districts, they feel, may even be taking advantage of that situation, hence letting kids come in early for kindergarten. If they don't cut it, they do kindergarten again. You're almost getting the funding twice. So what they're strongly recommending to everyone is to have an early entrance policy, which we have. Derek has followed it, I followed it when I was elementary principal, all of that. It's laid out here. What you would have to do would be early admitted to kindergarten. You have any questions on it? I certainly can answer those.
Is this a term, early?
We tend to use the date September 1st as the cutoff, but there are people now, you know, we can't go up to November 1st if they pass certain testing. It's all listed here, what they would have to do. You would have to be a very, very bright kindergartner to be early admitted.
And this is all state policies?
No, this is the Cannonball's one, actually. HVO is using a very similar type one. If you look at the back, the parents sign it.
Why are we going with November 1st? Is there a reason in general that we'd consider it in September?
Well, what could happen is you could have a really, really intelligent, Kathy Holmes' grandkid comes in, and I'm telling you, they are brilliant. And their birthday is April, and they come in and they contest, and they do really, really well, and they can get in that top ninetieth percentile. But there's still four all the way to April. It just causes such an age discrepancy for kids just in general and can cause problems down the road. So we like the date November. A lot of schools are using November because we understand that just because a child is born in July or November, they academically could be very similar. So we just, September 1st is kind of the date everyone in general uses, but I think different districts feel pretty good about November, that...
When we were in Redding, we had one that was September 2nd, their cutoff was September 1st. In order for her to go into that, she, there was a lot of testing, a lot of evals that had to be done before they would allow her in Redding District to be put into that.
The biggest thing is emotional health, too. I mean, these kids emotionally have to be ready to come to kindergarten, too. I think we see more problems with that. They may be academically ready, but they certainly aren't ready emotionally.
No, so as they get older, you see that. When they're young, it's not as much. Some of the kids end up being over a year older in their own grade than they are. And as they get older, not that they do bad in school, but...
It's just nice to have it writing, because then you can say to the parent, here's our policy. Very smart.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Brenda for the first reading. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Consideration to approve a teacher retirement request effective at the close of this upcoming, or this present school year?
Yeah, we have a retirement, Sherry Sass has decided to retire as our elementary art teacher. I think all of you know her. She's been around forever and done some really great things, really loves what she does. I think this was a very hard decision for her. She came in many times, met with different people in the office, and each time, you could tell there was a lot of emotion there. This has been her home, and now her husband even works here with her, so they drive to school every day together. But she says she just really wants to spend time with her grandkids, and it's time to, new stage of her life, so she's pretty excited. But we want to thank, and I know Derek would say this if he was here, just really want to thank her for years and years of, you know, dedication to our elementary, so...
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine. I thought it was thirty, but twenty-nine. It's great.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Motion by Jerry, seconded by Rob. Yeah, I think we need to openly congratulate her on the time she's put in for our district, and she's seen a lot in her time here, including all the Brit and all kids. So congratulations on her retirement. All in favor of the approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that is carried. Piggyback that. Item J, consideration to post and hire for an elementary art teacher for the fourteen-fifteen school year.
Yeah, the only thing that would throw this off would be registration. For some odd reason, if registration came in really low at the high school, which we don't assume is going to happen, it looks like numbers are going to be really high in that department again. So, you know, we'd alter it. We won't automatically just go out and hire a teacher, but we want approval to do this so that if we need to, we can.
Make a motion to approve it.
Rob's approved it.
I'll second.
Seconded by Kurt. Any other discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Consideration to dissolve the agreement with SEMNET and sign the agreement with W E T C starting July 1, 2014.
You saw the presentation last time. There's obviously a substantial amount of cost savings. Today was another example where a server went down. That doesn't happen with WTEC because that's off-site. They have a backup server. That doesn't happen with WTEC, because that's offsite, they have a backup server, I've checked with those superintendents, they just don't have days like this where we, we have no server connection. So I think overall, this is a really good program, especially for Mr. Hodges, who wants to get some ITV programming in here, I think this is really good for our kids and our teachers.
Make a motion.
Motion by Brenda.
I'll second.
Seconded by Rob. Further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. Discussion for options for possible makeup days.
Well, you can add February 20th to your list and February 21st, those were both lizard days. February 20th will be made up April 21st, that's the day after Easter, and February 21st will be a half day for students on March 24th. The other half of the day has to be a grading day for teachers, it's end of the quarter. The staff knows of these two days. I don't want this to be a lengthy discussion, maybe tonight, but I do want you to give me, give some thought and maybe email me or ideas. If we have a day in March, you know, you know, the principals are good with having the teachers working on certain things and having them report those things back, that's an option, but for students, I think we're just, we're out of days to have students come back. So like I said, that doesn't need to be a huge discussion tonight, but at some point, if we have any more days, I will be looking for some guidance on that. We've kind of used everything we've got built in, so.
Some schools doing a weekend, is that right? Can they do weekend?
Well, they, people are getting very creative, they're adding minutes to the days, but then your athletes leave, so they're not really getting the minutes. I think people are getting really creative with minutes more than days. You know, you had 15 minutes to every single day, you can do that, but now you've got busing, and they've got to get to, you know, what do you do about sports, then, and things like that.
I was almost wondering if like, PLCs, keep them, but change those to an after-school activity with teachers, or, you know, let the kids come in for the normal time, because they need their minutes, but push PLCs off to another part of the day.
Yeah, I do know.
I don't know, I mean, it's just.
A day is 300, or how?
370.
370 minutes, so.
For students.
And you are good on, on minutes.
Make up another day.
I don't know, if I like the PLCs, you start pulling those PLCs off, instead of bringing them in an hour later.
Yeah.
With PLC to a 3:30 to 4:30.
We'd have to combine that with something else to, to get to the number of minutes.
But Rob, you can't go past 3:30 with the teachers.
Oh, yeah.
So, you know, those are, those are good options, and I think they're all things to consider. We can get creative down the road, let's, let's hope no more come. You are at six, I've listed here, you know, how we made all those up, so.
How many days are there for Easter?
There's just Good Friday.
Well, just one day.
Yep. And we've had to do that before, that isn't new, and honestly, I've gotten no calls on that. I've gotten calls on calling the days, but I've gotten no, we've posted it everywhere, and I've gotten no calls on that, so.
We got a solid six weeks to go.
We got all of March.
You got all of March.
Right. You know, if we have to go in June, seniors obviously would come back, but we can do that, too. It's just, you've got to think about academics, are we doing it just to get the time in, or are we doing what's best for kids? And I think that's why you see a lot of districts adding minutes and things on, because we need instructional time with these kids. We don't want to just count the days to count the days, that's not what we're here for. So what I have on the agenda for admin tomorrow is kind of come up with a plan. I, why don't I put that into a couple different formats for you, email them to you, and kind of start that conversation? I just wanted to start thinking about it, that we're out of days, and to bring that to your attention publicly. Does that sound good, if I do it at admin tomorrow and they kind of send you a synopsis of? Okay, sounds good. Unless Mr. Brittenell has a bright idea?
Brittenell and bright ideas don't go in the same sentence.
The big B factor.
Yeah, I, I don't know, we're, I think we're gonna have to plan for a couple of more, but we'll just deal with it as it pops up, I guess.
We'll talk that way, when it doesn't happen, we'll just be happier.
That's true.
It won't happen.
Okay, reports, board members, we just talked about makeup days, do we have anything else for the cause?
I want to talk just real, real briefly on the field house, kidding.
Sure.
Me and Kurt took a little walk around, and, but I talked to Jake about getting some of that stuff out of there. The benches and the mats we get, but they're stacking ball stuff, the off-season stuff, instead of putting it all away. It just, it's becoming a cluttered mess.
Yeah, we can get that taken care of tomorrow, not a problem.
And I just wasn't sure, I don't think it's a Dave responsibility, at all?
Nope.
I don't, I know it's a coach's responsibility.
I noticed it when I was walking in this morning, too, so we'll, I will talk with Dave tomorrow, but we'll get it taken care of tomorrow.
Is there any way also, is there any way to storage space on top of those storage rooms in the field house, is it compatible?
We've got other spaces that are probably better, and easier, I mean, if you ultimately need that stuff, and that's why they're putting it there, you know?
Yeah, okay.
Let's look at those options first, and inside those rooms, there's still space in there, too, so we could put a few things in there. Dave and I will go through it tomorrow, we'll get it done.
Some of those loose, they're sitting over by the track and field.
The mats.
I know, exactly, I walked in this morning, and I definitely saw exactly what you're talking about, a lot of stuff.
Some little kids are wrapped up in that loose stuff.
They won't do that one, I go with.
They've been there.
Oh, what?
Yep, and that's, that, you know, you've got to go with some of that stuff, you don't want it to, it's expensive stuff.
Although a lot of them without the concession house.
Outside, yeah, and I don't know how that sits, Dave, that's up to whatever you do there, it's just, it's expensive stuff, that's all.
Yeah, I think some of the stuff just seems to be put away, it's just, to me, it's just lazy that coaches aren't putting the stuff away, offseason softball stuff hasn't started yet, bucket of balls is sitting out with all the stuff, and the, and literally, the door is here, and a bucket sitting outside the door. Why aren't we putting that stuff away? We'll just leave it out, because it's just convenient just not to put it away.
Yeah.
I agree. That's all I have for the cause.
Had a, had a real brief discussion with a local, I assume it to be local, I rep basketball on Sunday nights, you know, people bring their kids, they bring their spouses, there's independent walking and jogging there at Sunday night, and I just engaged this guy, because he looked like more of a sprinting kind of guy, and just asked him what he was, how he felt like, how he felt about the facility, and he said, you know, my schedule varies at work, sometimes I'm here at 6 o'clock, sometimes I'm here at this time. And he says, I've always been treated warmly, I've always been treated openly, I'm here when there's classes going on, and I'm here when it's dark out on both ends. He said, I just don't, sometimes I wonder when I'm here by myself, why it isn't, why it doesn't even get used more, so, really, a, a guy who had nothing but positive to say about that facility that we all questioned five years ago about its feasibility, and it appears just to be, you know, I wonder sometimes how they can even get the floors clean when it's just constant, constant all the time, but we seem to make do, and we are the envy of a lot of people.
And we want to keep it looking decent, that's, that's our big issue.
And there's still, there's still some issues with, you know, people that want to walk and run, and I can testify where sometimes there's kids all over, and someone's going to run into somebody, and it's going to be an accident, because, I don't know how to say it, but it's not an area to have your kids babysat at, either if the parents aren't there, it's, and, and they're running up, and they're on top of things, and how do you control that? That's still an issue, but it, it does kind of take away from that ability of going in and just walking and running and all, because it's, it's, there's, there's some, a lot of chaos there sometimes, and that makes it difficult.
And my response to that is I hope everyone is doing exactly what I do, probably easier for me, but to pull those kids aside and just teach them and explain to them, we are a community, and this is not how you behave, and I would hope if it was my kids, I hope someone would pull them aside and say, no, you need to go with your parents, and you need to tell them, I said, you need to go sit with your parents, because it's gotten better, but you're right, there's still kids, and we only have the one site manager, they need to be on site where they're supposed to be.
Yeah, right.
But I hope everyone feels comfortable saying things to people.
Yeah, yeah, I think so.
I think with the, with the adult education part of things, and, you know, there's some concern when mom comes in to do some volleyball, and nobody's there to watch the kids, and so you bring them along, and you hope they're good kids, because, because you know your kids. But unfortunately, sometimes, you know, you get involved with that volleyball game, or whatever it happens to be, and you lose track of the kids, and I see it in hoops quite frequently.
Yep, you're right.
Like old softball days, you put them in the cage, and they go play all day long, you're like, I'm going to say it, right?
Anyone else on the board member discussion? Okay, no student reports, upcoming meeting is March 10th at the elementary school, underlined, so remember that change of locale. Items to consider for the next board meeting, March 10th would be the consideration of the first reading, would we have that early admission second reading possibly on there?
Yep.
We would have, what other conversation was up there, I thought? The second reading.
Was it the, we were going to talk, well, makeup days, was that going to come up?
Makeup days, probably. And anything else that you deem important to put on the agenda, either for discussion or voting? Contact Lori or Beth, and get it taken care of. Public forum? We're weak tonight. Dave, anything, you come in just to take interest, do you have anything for the cause at all?
I only get three minutes.
There's either too much, where do I start?
Yeah, that's, that's pretty much, much what we do.
Yeah.
Lot going on, stuff like that, I'd say, yeah, people being, so you talk about the field house and stuff, and yes, we do, it's, it's busy and stuff, but it's gone, but there, there can be things that can be cleaned up and put away in there and stuff like that, and so, but all in all, it's been, been a good thing.
Mm-hmm.
Everyone, I say, I had a guy come in, it was Babe, we were closed, and had the door shut, but he came in to another door, and says, you know, can I, you know, run in there? And I said, oh, you know, usually during, these days we close everything down. Oh, that's okay, he says, rules are rules. I saw him back the next day.
Okay, having no public forum?
I think before we end, though, I just want to publicly acknowledge, I know we've sent emails, this is School Board Recognition Week, and I hope you guys all feel appreciated all the time, but this is kind of your week to hear it from everybody, that we want to thank you for everything that you do, except Rob.
Show us knowing, you know, take pictures of.
No, I, you know, you talk to enough superintendents, and I think I've been in this long enough to know, and Kathy works with a lot of different schools, not all school boards get along like this. You know, we disagree, and, and that's good conversation, and I think a lot of good things come out of that, but we also have some real, you know, great fellowship here, and I, I think that really makes a difference, and I think our school benefits from it, because you make smart choices, you challenge me, and you challenge our teachers, and I think you've done some really great things, I really do.